Seven. I'll call a meeting of the Trail County Commission Work Session to order. We can go down the line fairly quickly to item seven. I would tell you that we're adding an ordinance that will be voted on. In the commission meeting next week. Under the mayor's report, let me say tonight that I have tried very hard for the first six months to only base any decisions based on facts rather than rumors. But I've heard a little rumor that some members of the court feel like I'm not keeping you informed. I don't know what the matter needs to be, but that's a promise I made when I ran for office, that I would make every effort to keep the court informed. So if someone feels like I'm not doing that, let me know publicly or privately. And I'll do it a little deeper. If the issue happens to be in reach, it has been very difficult for the last six months to get information. I've been digging at this one. We have still not been given the information as to what that asset is going to be worth when it's placed out there, to really get a firm number on the taxes that the county would generate. And I don't think they will tell us. It's a billion dollar project and a big part of the assets are going to be that substation and that pumping station. But as of yet, we don't know the value of that asset. And I don't think that was given to the Baker group in Knoxville. But on any other issues, let me know if you don't think I'm providing you the information you need to make a decision, I'll work a little harder.
Mayor, I'd like to know one other thing too to ask them other than that. I'd like to know how they're scaling every year, how much it's going to draw and for how long? Where does it end?
That would be good to be sure about you, to know how fast it may depreciate. But we'll keep digging. Under committee board reports, does anyone who's chairman speak?
Yes, sir. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. The information that I've looked up, they kept referring to it as an head of the oral tax. I don't know, like I said, this is my research, I haven't been told this by anybody. But an head of the law on tax is looked at annually. It's not a property tax. It's looked at annually by an individual that could sell that property and an individual that could buy that. And the value is determined annually on that. Then whatever percentage, that's the head of the oral tax that you give. The number that they specified in the beginning is the absolute most we ever give. And then it will be praised, if you will, annually. And then we'll get a percentage of whatever that is. But it's not, it's not an appraisal that will go up. It will depreciate over hundred years, however, whatever the lap of that asset is. That's, that's the information that I found.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, to add to that, talking with Art after that meeting, he also admitted to the fact, as with any private individual or private company, they will have a team of lawyers that will do everything they can to allow them to pay the least amount of taxes as possible.
That sounds like the corporate world.
Yes, sir.
Any other, any other comments? Any committee or board reports, anyone having any report to our work session tonight? If you want to bring the board. We meet next week.
Yes, sir. I would say on the tree preservation ordinance, I know that there's been a lot of miscommunication through the community of what that really entails. And I would strongly urge every commissioner to actually read the full ordinance before they make any decisions one way or another on it.
Okay, moving to item eleven. Mr. Bill, I think you have, there's a letter on.
Mr. Dennis, do you have anything that you wanted to add to the agenda tonight or talk about?
Yes, ma'am. Personally, on that. Personally, on that, March sixteenth, and we did have a couple of items, but me being a new commissioner, I didn't realize it was my responsibility to get that information to him before the work session. And for that, I apologize and happy again. We had a couple of items that was discussed in personnel that we would like to send to the full body of the commission for their approval or not approval. One of those had to do with personnel policy, section seven, line H. And it is the policy that references employees being able to operate vehicles. The other ordinance in and of itself has to do with section B of, or section five of. And it has to do with the COVID nineteen sick leave policy that's currently in place in our personnel policy. The president made a statement on January the thirty third of this year that they were going to basically relieve their executive orders for COVID and that those orders would expire on maybe eleven of twenty twenty-three. The date in our policy, that our policy would sunset, if we don't change that date to comply with the federal expectation is December the thirty-first of twenty-four. So that's almost a year and a half that the county would have to comply with the policy that the federal government's already going to allow to expire. So we're not going to waive the policy in and of itself. We're just going to change the date so it aligns with the federal regulations that we've received and allow that policy to sunset on.
There's an audience, there are two more notices for next one.
Thank you. That means that you.
So will we have those, that information for the meeting?
I will get those emailed out this week. And that's our job.
Okay, number eleven. Actually, Mr. Bill, you have acknowledged, I made an error in my advice through this commission. The mayor, the last time we were voting for it, whether or not the mayor did make the tiebreaker as chair. I just made an error in my call. I apologize to the court for that. And so I just wanted to be aware that mayor can make that tiebreaker call both as chair or mayor. Thank you, sir. Next item is appointments. I regret to inform the court that Mr. Rod Bowen has reconsidered his appointment where the board is zoning his fields and they've removed his name. So he will not be up for appointment at our meeting next week. At the suggestion of Mr. Kerr, the chairman of planning, I will present this man department for the next meeting for a four-year term in planning commission. Next up are resolutions. We'll be looking at resolution twenty twenty-three oh three seven seven two, which is being reported in the red line. The type of commission that has been discussed. And it could be up at our next meeting. Also, resolution, P D A R consultant selection policy. Is that with, one time only? That's a sidewalk project. Any, you want to speak to that?
So basically, this is a requirement of the grant that we acknowledge or accept their selection policy. It actually is right in line with our professional services selection policy. It's just there, it's fifteen pages, where ours is two, maybe three pages. So it's really the same thing. I've read over it and it's just a requirement of the grant project.
My mission, that's, that's a ninety-five to five, I'm mentioning, but not ninety-five of the state. And I'll also remind you that when it starts, they told us it would be a two-year project. So it'll be, we'll have a Broadway campus under construction for at least two years. Number three is a resolution involving the opioid, opioid evasion agreement. With the United States of America. From what I understand, that is supposed to be three funds, what I can offer. Those funds will be allocated amongst the municipalities and the county governments, as well as the state and state agencies are receiving a large portion of it. They're trying to spend the pipe of the opioid epidemic. For lack of a better description, this agreement allows you to pay your enter into agreements with the state in order to get those funds. And of course, I would say that in just some, in maybe anticipation of maybe some thought processes and folk, you may get asked about these funds. I would really recommend that to this body that we have some form of organization, not just to start going out money, but to, at least the body recommend on how to use this money. Because there is an exhibit that I'm saying of getting, if there are certain limitations on this fund. It's not like it's back to settlement fund, we can just not do anything we want to. These are funds that are specifically designed for just use for the opioid epidemic. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I'd recommend passing this resolution. I mentioned that a number of entities have already been done to call in the mayor's office, wanting to get their piece of that pie, health council and some others. So I think it's important we have some committee that kind of will say that. Do you know the amount that we're looking at? I don't know. Every, every county is going to have a different allotment based on data that's been provided, based on population and whatnot. You probably recognize that some of your larger, that column is going to see what there's more with the rural counties, that a lot of those stores problem for its damage. I can't speak to the form that I was telling that word. I think the last number that I heard is eighty-five thousand from Trail County.
We have received eighty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-eight so far.
And that will be on an annual basis for how long do they do?
Three years or something along.
Three years and then I think it's one for long return to that, maybe one for fifteen and one for now. But these are all separate funds and so. Because this is the second wave of it. The mission agreement?
I got an email about two weeks ago, the opioid arrangement profile, that same, that same?
I think, I believe so.
Okay, then what is this, that's the county for trial twenty-three was just over sixty-three thousand dollars?
That's the first number we heard. And I think it's been raised.
Yeah, this was, this was one of the things that was taken out like two weeks ago. I couldn't freshly found.
I don't think they fully know yet because there are some companies that have not settled their lawsuits. The last I heard, Walmart had not. And there was, I meant there were two of the lawsuits. And these are the billions of dollars that they can spread across a bank and wire.
Yeah. Now, I would agree on that, that was hard.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Oh, no. When court meets next week, we'll have a public hearing, second reading on three ordinances. All have been discussed and you're all familiar with each of those. We'll have first reading on people six, seven ordinances. We'll first look at under number four, that's two seventy-five twenty twenty-three dash twelve regional enablement to R one highway Fina. Ms. Miami, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I have that on your table, those reading where they want to take two acres out of the property that is next to their lot. That's frankly, we don't. And then the rest of it are going to be combining to their property and that's on highway ten.
Ms. Miami, would you come up to the podium because you're going to make all the phone calls? For your presentation, if you don't mind?
Certainly. Okay, so on highway ten, the parties would like to separate two acres off of their one tract of land and sell that off. And then the remaining acreage, they're going to combine with their lot that's next to it. And if I may, thank you. So this gives you an idea exactly of what's going to be happening here. It's not going to be a landlocked parcel there or anything. Any questions?
Questions on that? The next one is ordinance two seventy-six twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. There's only A one C one on Halltown.
We have the parties that are asking to do this, if you would like to speak, if you would like to do on Halltown Road.
Oh, Crockett, Crockett, surveying the areas that I was pointing to the family, he's the owner and proposed development. We're asking, Amy has a couple hundred acres on Halltown Road. It is a cattle operation on the property now. We're asking to split five, one, three acres out of the east end of the property. I request it to be, because I'm C ones. And I can tell you about this business.
Thank you. Nice to meet everyone. So my name is Anthony Nintal. And I just recently acquired the property or the reference property at Halltown Road just under two years ago. In that time, we've been able to open up a cattle business. And my primary business is managing property and casualty claims insurance companies on a global basis. So we have a number of assets that we store due to off-peak and peak season, seasonality of our business. We were looking to build a ten thousand square foot facility that's going to be on Halltown Road. And to obviously complement the rest of the area and continue to make it as nice as we've been trying to make that area for ourselves. We have very few team members that'll be involved at that facility. We expect from time to time, maybe only one team member or employee that'll actually be at the property. So it wouldn't be an area that would have a considerable amount of traffic there. We certainly enjoy that property for, you know, the peace that it certainly brings myself and, you know, hope to even have my own personal office there one day facing all those cows. So that's what our intended purpose was. And certainly, if there's any questions that I could, I could answer for anyone, I'd be happy to do so and certainly take any comments or direction or advice as well. So appreciate everyone's time.
So just really, you want to read what?
No, so we're going to store vans and trailers inside of it. The trailers that I have specifically, they're very expensive. You know, one, one trailer could be a million dollars. So we try to keep those inside of the building in order to not have as much wear and tear as being outside. There's also some repairs that are general maintenance type items that we do. The trailers are specialty type items, they're all bespoke. So there's nothing that are similar to these trailers anywhere else on the planet. So we haven't built specifically for our intended use. And again, like our, our main business is primarily servicing six of the top ten automotive insurers on a catastrophic basis. So if you see storms or you see tornadoes that create tens of thousands of claims, we're usually the administrator, if you would look at it in a property perspective, almost like the general contractor of all those claims. So that's my business. I started it twenty-two years ago with very, very humble beginnings. And, you know, just focused on some, some core items, like making our customers happy and doing the right thing by our customers. And here we are today in Hartsfield, talking about building another facility, so.
You said another, you know, not assuming the law gets me?
We do, we have a facility in Texas, Dallas, Texas.
Mission. Funny question, I go for Ms. Rosalie. The, the man on your show, the entire two hundred and twelve acres, which, which, which part is it? Five acres?
In your, you can also see where they're on another sheet there. They have a boundary survey. So they're going to be one, three acres on that sound roof over there.
Yeah, that's where, where, where are they out here? I can't see where, it's somewhere near.
Station place. Any questions? Any questions at all?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, under number six, we have one that's two seventy-seven twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, resulting in R one C two on highway twenty-five. Ms. Miami, would you tell us about that?
Yes, this is the piece of property that Matthew Carmen owns on highway twenty-five near. You look at the map and see that it's near. The Henry Ridge subdivision. All of the parcels along twenty-five here, we're trying to keep commercial. Well, this one happens to be zone R one, so he is seeking to have that zone commercial. They never found any evidence of that and I understand.
Back there, that's access from the O K U. I've been paying taxes, commercial taxes only this two thousand.
I understand.
You can back there asking, you've got the paperwork, you should. See, I believe only you went through it, it was done one year, twenty-three year ago. Nineteen eighty-nine, but all the, uh, uh, county, I've not counted the city group. Go, let's see, Old Banks, Barry Holder. Can't remember the other two, there's two more, that's missing, no.
We had searched for the planning commission minutes and we did not find it in there.
Commission, it'll be in the old city, city files. It was done in nineteen ninety-nine.
And I understand, and I've asked and we didn't find any records. So he's coming forward and asking it to be re-sold and it would be documented about. And I understand.
I believe Matthew brought this property as murder property. Reason, it was, when it was sold, it was sold zone. I remember who we bought it off of, and I know they said it was much property.
They're going to build to like you to know. Okay. We're going to put it there. A nurse patient, she sold it to Matthew.
So, and I understand this did go through the planning commission. And again, no evidence was found. And he's asking to have the official results, see if he can ask to be on records.
The other question is, yes, when you track it aside, if you turn to the future reader on the left, is that commercial, was what?
Not when we result.
Yes, that was history time, you're about, I would say about five months ago.
With this place and face next to it, it's twenty-three years. Well, we're complaining.
Any other question? You have a comment? Thought we'll leave number seven, or two seventy-eight twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, resulting in A one, the horrible ones, get a break. I am, would you tell us?
Yes, again, I took what I received from the surveyor on your table there, where they're separating the house and one point, thank you. The house and one point three eight acres off of this property. And they're adding the reminder that to the property that they own behind there, to kind of keep the family farm together. Any questions?
Questions? Number eight, ordinance two seventy-nine twenty twenty-three sixteen. The field ordinance sixty-six dash twenty twelve, but two, the bottom head of the board. Mr. Bill, would you like to address that? There was that whole ordinance that had been passed. It's a little bit antiquated in, of course, the patent, the personnel column we were down. But they seem like there was some legal conflict with our personnel policies. Or I recommend that we go ahead and reveal that, that a personnel policy now. And I would have said, just go and do that. So that's what this, this is designed to do. One, any questions?
Is it possible for us to get a copy of what the illegal jerk class, they have to have this private, that way it is?
Get a copy of that. We have a copy sent out there.
The personnel policy will refer to the ten points.
For one that was passed in August twenty-fourth, to take a press and then on the. Under number nine, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, commercial, that's some design guidelines. Would you like to speak to that? Miami, would you mean?
So the planning commission has been meeting for business the past five to six months. Coming up with commercial and industrial guidelines for businesses that are coming into the city. And what you're seeing is the current section of what's happening there. They wanted to go ahead and create a section that totally addressed the business building guidelines for the commercial industry coming in. So that's going to be the placeholder and we're going to be bringing it in in chunks. That way it's going to be easier to look at and understand what you're going to be voting on. Together, that's the first part there. We also put in there the section on the tree preservation with the buildings coming in. Instead of just raising the whole piece of property and taking out all the vegetation, we're looking at preserving some of the trees, not only to create aesthetic appeal in Trail County, because we are an agricultural county. But it also helps with soil erosion, preventing that. And then you're also going to see, what else did we have on there? The ADA parking. Making sure that we protect that parking for those that need that. Any questions?
Do we know when the dark sky ordinance is supposed to be brought for us too?
I'm so glad you asked about that. That was the next item that we're going to be looking at at the next planning commission meeting. E N R C is gathering information. There are some cities that are already and counties that are already having this in place. Some are very, very strict, some it's not as strict. So we're looking at what would be best for this county. And they've been talking about it at the last planning commission meeting, yes, sir.
We know exactly, we probably, inside our urban service, that this would be a right now.
That which way?
That's what's on this here with the right. With tree removal.
The tree removal. Okay, so we have property, say, for instance, next to the high school. That large sections of land that are, have a lot of different trees, older trees, large trees. Anybody coming in and building any type of commercial or industrial section, they would have to protect a certain percentage of those trees. We don't say they, every tree.
So all, if they're in twenty-four.
If they're greater than twenty-four inches.
As all.
Yes. And if they wanted to cut down trees that are greater than twenty-four inches, they would need to go before the B Z A and they would get a credit towards the buffer. Every business that comes in, every industrial project that comes in, has to have a buffer strip. Ten feet, that has like, just like they did at Espaiz House, they had to have the seven foot fence. And they also had to have trees and trebery to create a barrier between like a residential property. A barrier between like a residential property.
So how would this affect said Bratton Farm if the Embry piece were coming as market properties? They said there was eighty acres of trees there.
Right, but it's not a commercial property. It's A one. What they said they were going to have to come to the BZA before was that there, the use of the solar farm is an accessory structure. And they're going to be covering up so much of the property. In our zoning ordinances, if you look at all the different zones. You are only allowed to cover up so much of the property with any type of structure, whether it be a shed or a barn or anything else like that.
They say they would, they would have gone and asked for rezoning for commercial. They say they would.
They did, as, as being commercial, I thought they were still having it as they like.
They do. That's exactly what they said. Uh, but, but our, our voting, our, directly, uh. The utilities allowed in, in every district of, of each region.
Yes.
It really needs to be done. It could be emergency use, but I think they. It wouldn't need to be done properly necessarily if they found. Anywhere. I can't say bring them down to speak what they said last week that they had to come and after we zone.
They said they'd have to come ask for a variance now. They said they had to ask for a variance with the BZA because of the, the amount of covers that they're going to be having on the farm. Obviously, they were committing to and was. Listening closely on my bigger fan.
I guess my question is, this one might have seen the more trees, one, which one you know. I will really do like that ones. I'm going to deal with the same type of.
Sweet. What they would have to use is a certified arborist. To come in. And say which ones would stay. If they wanted to. For now, some trees, of course, you're going to encounter some trees that are diseased, that are not, not a viable tree. They're on, you know, they're last leg or about to die or could pose a safety hazard. A certified arborist would make that, you think they're going to say, okay, yes, you can put that down. But again, any tree that they cut down, they would be able to. Get so much uh, credit on what their veteran would have to be.
I'd say search for answers for this.
Mr. Gordon, I think even I see it, except that that's a way to make it very difficult for. Industrial, it's even commercially, it's a product, home, you can't take commercially, it puts a high cost on and therefore puts a, uh, another hurdle in my head to jump. Um, and uh. You know, we're always saying, I try to have this next thing, this next thing, we don't want this, we don't, we would like to bring this issue. Uh, well, when you put barriers in front of those individuals, uh, you are. Lessening the likelihood of them being.
That's right.
Well, and that's the nature that the planning commission does is that they come together and they put together suggestions for you. And this is healthy for you to be able to discuss this and say, okay, I don't think that this is going to work for our county. Well, what will, what suggestions do you have? Is it too much of a percentage? Not enough.
Well, actually, yes, there were some times, but there's times that they will work.
And those are the times where they can go to the BZA and set up many of the variants. That doesn't work.
Isn't that why we have a planning mission? I mean, if, uh, it's not one thing to build something, they're going to present a site point and it's going to have basic anxiety. On there. So basically, we will prove it, and basically, what you want. So like, if you want us to take this off the same tree, the same, I just don't, don't be watching for him in life and he goes there and I think it's potentially discouraging. This is, it's very, very rich.
Well, it's an attempt to stay in the voluntary, it's.
I'm, 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 I'm a good liberal. I, I, I'm all for, I don't need a argument, but, but, uh, you know, not the extent of it.
The reason why I brought up the dark skies ordinance is because it would be easier if all of these government overreach ordinances was on the same agenda. So we could build them all down the same night. That's the reason why I was asking that.
Any other discussion?
Your person is true to tree. You gotta have a, uh, you gotta have subdivision, they go. And you want to keep it as much quiet as the way of the, they all have a barrier. And they got a big old tree out there that they go, where they go put it better, they cut that down, but they go have to replace it back. In the back or around that barrier on their side, which will really be a bigger, bigger tree, but it's, it's not taken away. If they make anybody, it's, everybody complains when there's noise, so you, you know. The dollars go out here, they, they made, they put a barrier and put trees, uh, bushes in and stuff that will grow the cover and stop the sound and, and we've done it in other places.
We already got buffer.
Yeah. You know. You want to. There's no kind of, and go watch the tree bugger to get a hold of it. Mr. Good. Then you go, people replace the back and then. Mr. Good.
Uh, I don't disagree. And that's what I'm going to say, we already put it up. For the buffer zone, uh, it, it's a, it's a really come and then built in the residential area, uh, to, you know, it's highly efficient, so, uh, so really come here. There's a buffer zone, have to be, a number of plants have to be put in there, that piece already there. But I wouldn't disagree with one comment you mentioned about the tree. Let's say the twenty-four, twenty-five inch diameter tree. Um, let's sit in the middle of the lot for a entity that needs to. Build there, they have to come and ask for that tree to move. Then it has to take that amount of time to go through a horn zoning and, and, and if they get denied that, then. We've got to figure out how to build around that tree. Uh, it puts a very big hurdle in my opinion in, in front of, uh.
You're not building up, you can see it very true.
Any other discussion? Doctor, there's mine. Appreciate it. Under budget amendment, um. Let me bring to the committee of attention of the uh, traffic light situation.
All right. It seems like there, there may be a deep amount of, can we? Can we, can we, we possibly break out the tree, right, right? And have a separate ordinance? Cause like. Someone, what is, when I just had all three of these. It's like. It's like, maybe the tree on, on the exception loose. I don't think, I don't know that you have, they have eighty-eight.
Yeah, they got issues with it too.
We should be able to, to divide, to bucket the heat about that.
Give it one second. They can be separated.
Just all this button up here, it's been kicking up sparks.
But they're wanting a separate ordinance for the trees and.
Industrial design.
You did one of several. So. Yes. Okay, on the pleasure of the man.
Oh, I don't know.
Amy, do you want to think of what we're doing with traffic lights?
Yeah, I know.
So, um. Excuse my flagging this right now. I just got some family news that I'm trying to work for. Um. So on the one eleven budget amendment, uh, it is a fundamental straw. What uh, we're asking to do is move the current traffic lights that are at Broadway. Um, to the intersection over at Andrews. And the quote that is behind the budget amendment shows the fifty-six thousand of. Um, the installation of new poles, cabinets, controller equipment, electrical service. I mean, everything's listed for you there. And, and then there's, it's going to be about roughly about fifteen to twenty thousand for battery backups. Um, and the ones that are currently being installed on Broadway does not have a battery backup. So we are asking for two battery backups for that. The battery backups will be for uh, storm damage or uh, if a wreck hits and hold any outages in that area. And. I think I've explained that pretty well. Are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Cliff, Cliff explained that, that the battery backup, well, not only the battery, but the, the computers that will be, a doll will be able to read traffic. In the afternoon when the traffic gets backed up and the computer will be able to read that and open up twenty-five to let traffic flow on through. So it's, it's going to reduce. Go along with solving the problem and able to travel. Yes, or Mr. Miller?
I'm just going to take these years pass through, uh, finance tonight with a favorable work when they, the committee. Thank you for that. I have a question about things.
Yes.
Been okay, you know, you're probably been drawn by that in October, in the eighth day, you say the seventh.
This was updated this morning, so that, that question.
Okay, okay.
I keep it out there. Under front one forty-one schools, um. Going and just, both of them, so by grants, everything. Um, it's looking right at the transfer. So that will be overdone. Commission next one. Any other visits? The last, the first comment, it's, uh, uh, next thing. If no other. Lives, uh, then it's going to open the journal. Call that play and say hi. Thank you, everyone.